Is hereby called to order. Uh, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our Selma City Council meeting Tuesday, May the eleventh, twenty twenty-one. We're going to remind everyone and ask you to please remember to mute your devices. So if we have any interference, uh, the mute your devices will turn them off. So we'll have any interference. Again, welcome to our meeting, and our meeting is called to order. Uh, our first item on the agenda, we have an invocation, and we're gonna ask that councilman, uh, Carmichael, will you please offer us our invocation for the evening?
Please bow. Dear Lord, we thank you for our freedom to come here and deliberate and, uh, move this city forward. Dear Lord, we ask you, uh, to be with each council member and all the citizens, that we work together, uh, with the mayor and improve our city. And, dear Lord, we ask that we do these things in the best interest of Selma moving forward. Christ do it right.
Amen. Thank you so much, uh, Councilman Carmichael. At this time, let us all stand for our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Now, at, uh, this time, well, our, our roll call, we're gonna ask that our clerk, Mrs. Ivy Harrison, please conduct our roll call.
President Young.
Present.
Councilman Harville.
Present.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Present.
Councilwoman Carmichael.
Present.
Councilwoman James.
Present.
Councilman Randolph.
Present.
Councilwoman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Present.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for the roll call. The character trait of the month is courage, doing what we know is supposed to be done before we are forced to do it. Let's all remember our character trait of the month, which is courage. Counsel, you have before you our agenda for Tuesday, May the eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, hopefully you had an opportunity to review that agenda. Uh, if there are no questions regarding the agenda, uh, the chair will entertain a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
Oh, move, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Councilwoman Lisa James first, so she's second. So it's been moved by Councilman Johnson and properly seconded by Councilwoman James to approve our agenda for the evening. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman James.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, for your votes and approval for tonight's agenda. Next item is approval now of our consent agenda. Hopefully, everyone has a copy. Uh, this is our consent agenda for Tuesday, May the eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Our first item for approval on consent agenda is to approve a budget adjustment for Public Works Department to transfer twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars from account number one point six two zero zero dash five one zero three eight to account number one point six two zero zero dash five one zero five six to purchase three trucks. Item number two on our consent agenda is to approve a purchase order in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents for Sun South LLC to repair John Deere tractor. Item number three, to approve a contract with J and M Displays for fireworks agreement for the Fourth of July celebration in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Item number four, to approve BMSS LLC invoice in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars for accounting services. Item number five, to approve Seroni Permut PC invoice in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for legal services. Item number six, to approve a budget debit to correct council line item number one point six zero zero one point five one zero five five to reflect account number one point six zero zero two point five one zero five five to be retroactive as of April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Item number seven, to approve Resolution R one forty-two dash twenty slash twenty-one, back-to-school sales tax holiday, beginning at twelve oh one AM on Friday, July the sixteenth, and ending twelve midnight on Sunday, July eighteenth. Item number eight, to approve Resolution R one forty-four dash twenty slash twenty-one, T-Mobile special use permit application for modification slash upgrade. And our final item for consent tonight is to approve Resolution R one forty-three dash twenty slash twenty-one Verizon special use modification permit. Those are the nine items that are on our consent agenda for the evening. Are there any questions? Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda with those nine items? I know that there were other items that we discussed in work session, but we'll bring those up under, uh, the different mayor's report, attorney's report, and under new unfinished business on some of those items, but these are the items that are on for consent right now. Any questions? Hearing no questions. At this time, uh, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda for the evening?
So moved.
Okay. Uh, I believe we're gonna say we heard Councilman Johnson make the motion and Councilman Randolph seconded the motion to approve our consent agenda for Tuesday, May the eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael.
Yes, on one through seven, they've stayed on eight and nine due to the possible use of concrete and alleged.
Councilwoman James.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for conducting the roll call vote, and thank you, counsel, for those votes, uh, approval of our consent agenda. The next item on our agenda tonight, um, will, will, are our minutes, and we're gonna ask that the clerk, Mrs. Harrison, uh, please conduct, uh, the presentation of our minutes.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
You should have before you the minutes of the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one council evening agenda that is before you for consideration as approval.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions regarding the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one minutes that have been presented for approval for tonight? Any questions? Hearing no questions. At this time, counsel, is there a motion to approve our minutes for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one?
Oh, move.
Okay? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay? It was moved by Councilman, uh, Johnson and properly seconded by Councilman Carmichael to approve our minutes for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman James.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you, counsel, for your votes. At this time, now we'll go to our announcements, and at this time, are there any council members that have any specific announcements that they would like to make at this time?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Um, good evening, counsel.
Good evening, ma'am.
Mayor and constituents. Um, Ward Two is partnering with, um, Libs, Snow's Plan and Service, the YMCA, and the Michael Johnson Foundation, um, and we're gonna have their first annual lapse for Lucas and Mental, um, Health. It's gonna be a five K Walker Run Community Health Fair and Fun Day. It's gonna include free food, free giveaways, live entertainment, first and second, first, second, and third place trophies will be awarded, and they're gonna be medical screening, nutrition information, um, weight management, HIV testing, bingo room, there's gonna be a, a, a whole lot of things going on that day. It's gonna be Saturday, May twenty-second, um, starting at ten PM, uh, from ten to one. There's gonna be a walk that's gonna start from Block Park, they're gonna walk from Block Park to the YMCA, that's approximately three miles, and that starts at nine, and you have to register for that. So you can see me for more information on that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. All right. Are there any other announcements? Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes, I would like to make an announcement to the citizens in Ward Seven. Um, I know we've been getting a lot of calls about, um, ask them to be patient, we're trying to, um, get another tractor repaired so that we can come out and, uh, understand that you want those lots, uh, some of them state lots next to your property and, uh, be patient with us also. We want, uh, people to be patient with the city right away to ask, uh, we know that, we see that, and, uh, we aware, and we put work orders in, and, uh, it is done by a day-to-day operation according to the way they're coming to the ward to do it. So I'm asking citizens with the potholes and all the work, uh, we are aware of it, you know, work orders have been placed in, so I'm asking the citizens in my ward to be very patient, uh, they are going to get to our work orders.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. Are there any other announcements? Councilwoman Lisa James.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I just wanna do a shout-out to the Public Works Department, and our streets are really, really looking good, trying to get to where we can see the houses, and I seen them out this week getting so many limbs, and I, I, you know, I was, I only have another disaster with all these limbs on the curb, so, uh, Public Works was getting them up, and I just wanna appreciate them for what they did in Ward Four and other wards, cause it's, it's looking good, but we still got a long ways to go, and I just wanna send a shout-out to Public Works. And also, I just wanna invite you guys to when you see, uh, a senior that's graduating, you know, give them a positive word, cause we got so many seniors that are gonna be graduating on this week Selma High, we graduating on Friday night, so I gotta get back from the conference and make sure I take care of graduation, and Ms. Christie Thomas, we are gonna take care of graduation, I will be back early on Friday, cause I am the graduation coordinator for Selma High, so when you see a senior, just give him a positive word, that's for all schools, not only Selma High.
Thank you. Very good. Any other announcements? Yes, Councilman Johnson?
I just wanna compliment, and with Councilman, uh, James, uh, I want to still shout-out to Miss Sylvia Smith, uh, for helping me donate some Gatorade to the Public Work, uh, because at this hot out there, uh, we took two cases of Gatorade out there to, uh, to the Public Work, and I'm gonna thank Miss Sylvia Smith for, uh, helping me donate the, uh, Gatorade to Public Work. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Any none? Thank you, counsel, for those announcements, and let us act accordingly based upon those announcements. Now, we'll go to our citizens concerned, and this evening, we only have one citizen on for citizens concerned, that's, uh, Mr. Sam Walker, uh, here to discuss police reform, and we're just gonna say good evening to Mr. Walker, and come on up and just remind everyone that for citizens, uh, concerns, we three to five minutes. And so, Mr. Walker, thank you, and you have a fore.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
I am totally vaccinated, so I'm gonna take my last, uh, four minutes. Uh, a couple months ago, I submitted this list of recommendations for the council to consider on, uh, police reform, I don't know, you, you received it, uh, okay? And I, I hadn't heard anything, I found it, um, since I submitted the recommendations, so I was just, basically, it's just a follow-up to see what's the next step, what are we gonna suppose of discussing these recommendations? And, uh, that's one, and then the other thing is, uh, we, we, at Alabama New South Coalition, we realized there are a lot of unsolved murders in Selma, and, uh, you know, we wanted to try to find a way to be supportive and helping the police with some of these, uh, some of these cases, we are actually gonna raise some reward money and put out rewards for some of these cases, because we want, we, you know, people, people, families are still hurting, because their loved ones are gone, and there's no, no, there's no resolution for what happened to the loved ones, and so we got a couple members of our organization that's in that situation, so we wanna raise some reward money to put up a reward to help try to identify some of these, uh, situations, so we raise some of these situations to a close, so basically, that's what I wanna, cause follow-up with how do we go from the next step and deal with the recommendations, and then, you know, we wanna meet with whoever your public safety, uh, committee or whoever, try to come up with, how can we put up some kind of reward for some of these cases that we got unsolved right now.
Okay. Uh, well, Mrs. Walker, again, welcome. Thank you for bringing me up, I think that's an excellent idea with the reward money, I think all of us are concerned about those murders that have not been solved, because I mean, it's a family that is gone, and they don't know what's going on. So thank you for bringing that recommendation. At the work session, we talked about we're gonna have a public safety committee meeting before this month is out.
Okay.
So at that public safety committee meeting is when we can discuss those recommendations, cause we've got some other recommendations for some other citizens too. So we need to try to get all of these different recommendations together, compile, and come up with something to bring that to the full council to actually vote on regarding the police reform, uh, and also about the, um, the board, the review board. And so, uh, and before this month is out, we will be having a public safety committee meeting, and I think I serve on that committee, then Councilwoman Jamie Thomas serves on that committee, and also Councilwoman Christie Thomas. So be on the lookout before this month is out for a meeting that will be scheduled.
Goodness. Citizens will need to attend that meeting.
It's gonna be open to the public. And so the citizens will be able to attend, um, that meeting, and we're, I think we're in person now with things, so unless you're otherwise, I'll give it to the mayor and see, we may have to do it virtually, but we will have a meeting before this month is out.
Thank you, that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walker, it's always a pleasure to see you.
All right.
All right. Thank you. All right, counsel, we can move on to our next items on our agenda, which, uh, this time, we're in our mayor's report and attorney's report. So, good evening, Mayor Perkins, uh, you have a fore, sir.
Good evening, uh, counsel, good evening, uh, to everyone. Um, our reports, they're consistent with what we shared with you during the, during the work session, and so, um, we're gonna just scroll down through it here real quickly. Um, the two items at the top of the agenda, uh, they've been consistent there, I have no comment or even desire in a discussion on them this evening, um, just bear for reminder that they're still outstanding. Uh, the next two items, uh, we have covered them in your consent, uh, agenda, and that is the, uh, the auction equipment purchase, uh, that information was shared with you, the state invoice, and the adjusted, uh, budget line items. Also, the John Deere tractor repair, uh, that was done by Public Works, uh, that also was part of consent agenda, uh, we have shared the documentation supporting, uh, the acquisition of those items, and so we'll move now directly into, uh, the, uh, planning and development items, they had several, uh, some of them are in the consent agenda, the J and M Display Contract is in the consent agenda, thank you for that, that's for the Fourth of July fireworks display. Now, uh, I'm going to, uh, turn the, uh, the, the remainder of this report over to, uh, Danielle, uh, Woodin, the Director of Planning and Development, to go over those items that are not included in the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
The first resolution, um, that was not included in the consent agenda is Resolution R one thirty-nine, twenty twenty-one, and that's the authorization to approve the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers non-federal sponsored self-certification of financial capability, um, for agreements. Um, basically, this is just an authorization that's gonna be signed by the interim treasurer, just stating that we are aware, um, of what our cost share portion is with that grant match, and it also gives the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers the ability to go out and seek additional federal funding, funding for their portion of the cost share, uh, agreement, and we have this evening, David Newell, with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers on the line if you all have any questions, um, regarding approval of that financial capability, um, for.
We're asking counsel's favorable consideration of Resolution one thirty-nine dash twenty, uh, slash twenty-one. Uh, David, if you have anything you would like to contribute to this discussion, if this is the appropriate time to do so.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Danielle, uh, described it, uh, properly, and, uh, you know, I think it's a good project from the federal perspective, and, um, hopefully you guys are, uh, willing and, uh, able to move forward, uh, with us on this, this, uh, study and the next phase of the project being designed.
Thank you, uh, counsel. Uh, uh, it's back to you, Council President Young, we ask for favorable, vocal consideration on this issue.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, at this time, we're gonna open it up for any questions that any of the council members, uh, may have, or any council, yeah, questions, let's see, Councilman Carmichael, go ahead.
This, the match, uh, over what period of time are we going to match that for a thousand? And, uh, and how, how, where are the funds coming from?
Eric Wood. Um, yes, so that, um, grant, that portion of the fund is gonna be due, I think, in June of twenty twenty-two, and so we did put that in the budget for this year under our grant match, and we were hoping to put the additional two hundred thousand in next year's, um, budget for our grant match portion, to get to the, the entire four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Good deal. Please.
Very good. Any other questions, okay, counsel, regarding, uh, this particular, uh, Resolution R one thirty-nine dash twenty slash twenty-one? Hearing no questions. Is there a motion to approve, uh, Resolution R one thirty-nine dash twenty slash twenty-one?
Oh, move, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
All right, please allow record of reflective, it was moved by Councilman Johnson and properly seconded by Councilman Carmichael to approve Resolution R one thirty-nine dash twenty slash twenty-one, authorization to approve the U.S. Corps of Engineers non-federal sponsored self-certification of financial capability for agreements. At this time, we're ready for the question. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman James.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, counsel. Again, I want to express, uh, the City Selma Precision Corps of Engineers for the great work they're doing, uh, on our riverfront, uh, it is much needed, uh, and I am convinced that the work they're doing right now will be, uh, very value-saving, uh, our Water Avenue, uh, historic history. Uh, the next item is also, uh, approved in the consent agenda, uh, and that is the, uh, the Alabama Emergency Management Administration Hazard Mitigation Grant, uh, and that, uh, we thank you for that. Danielle, you may continue.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the authorization to apply for the National Park Service Paul Brown Historic Revitalization Grant Program. Um, this is a sub-grant program, um, that we are applying to. The total amount of the federal share would be seventy hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a ten percent match from the city, so our portion would be seventy-five thousand dollars, um, and that will cover the administrative cost. Um, this is only authorization to apply to the grant, so we are not sure if we will be actually awarded the grant, but this is just simply an authorization so that we can submit a grant, uh, um, application.
We ask counsel's favorable consideration, I just submit the grant, the grant submission will cause an obligation of the match fund of seventy thousand.
All right, counsel, if any questions, uh, regarding, uh, item number eight on the mayor's report, authorization to apply for National Park Service, uh, Paul Brown.
And, um, Council President, if I can just clarify, cause this will be a three-year grant, um, allocation, so it, it would only be twenty-five thousand dollars in match per year for a total of seventy-five thousand.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, make that help us, counsel, mayor. Any other questions? Are there any questions?
Uh, that's twenty-five thousand, uh, starting in twenty twenty-two, correct? Is that right?
Yes, if we're awarded the grant, they normally make that public in September, and so that will be for the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Also, I, I, I think we, uh, I think we took seven out.
Yeah, I've come in too.
Oh, that's on it.
All right. Any other questions? Are there any questions? Hearing no questions. What is a counsel's pleasure regarding item number eight, authorization to apply for National Park Service Paul Brown Grant?
Oh, move.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Uh, it was moved by Councilman Johnson and properly seconded by Councilman Carmichael to approve, I'm sorry, Jimmison, okay? Got y'all's voices mixed up. Councilman, uh, Jimmison, to approve, um, authorization to apply for National Park Service Paul Brown Grant. Uh, we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman James.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Mayor Perkins, I was gonna ask you to go back to item number seven on your report, it was originally in the consent agenda, but it was asked to be taken off, so we took it off so we could discuss it.
That, that's fine, and, uh, I was just, I was just made aware of that, and so, uh, we can go back to item seven, uh, Resolution one forty, uh, dash twenty, uh, slash twenty-one. Danielle, you want to provide an explanation for that?
Sure. Um, Resolution one forty is authorization to apply to the Alabama Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant, um, and basically, um, it's honestly just free money. The county, um, receives all mitigation funds, and then they allocate them to cities and towns within the, within the county. Um, for instance, the last batch of mitigation fund that we received, the city did not get any, any of those funds, um, they were used for the county jail, and so at this time, basically, they have an additional twenty-two thousand dollars that they are willing to allocate to the city of Selma, and so this is just authorization, um, to apply so that we can receive those funds. Um, there is a twenty-five percent match to those funds, so we would be, um, responsible for roughly, I think it's like five thousand fifty dollars is what the city's portion would be, but we will receive twenty-two thousand dollars from the hazard mitigation funds.
Just want to be clear, so the most that we can give is twenty-two thousand dollars, Mr. President?
Yes, that, that's the amount that, that the county is willing to provide to the city of Selma. For this, um, it was basically just additional funds that they had left over.
Okay. Uh, any other questions, counsel? Any other questions regarding this plan? Is that all right?
The, uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The, uh, the fifty-five hundred to twenty-five percent match, I, I wasn't clear at the work session whether that was gonna be an addition on the budget, or if that was included in the budget.
No, that, that amount is already included, um, under our grant match funds, we have additional funds under that line item.
Okay. All right. Uh, I'm sorry, I just didn't get it back clear Thursday night. Thank you.
Very good.
You're welcome.
No other questions? No other questions? Hearing no further questions, is there a motion for approval of Resolution R one forty dash twenty slash twenty-one?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it was moved by Councilman Carmichael and properly seconded by Councilman Johnson, uh, to approve Resolution R one forty dash twenty slash twenty-one, authorization to apply Alabama Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant, twenty twenty-one. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman James.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Wood. Open now to item nine on the agenda, the appointment to Historic Development Commission. Danielle would proceed.
Um, yes, this is Resolution 138, 2021, which was tabled at our last council meeting. But we are bringing it back to appoint the additional members to the Selma Historic Development Commission. The commission is a nine-member commission, and we currently only have five members. And so this resolution is a resolution to appoint those additional members. So current members Charles Johnson, Beretta Winkley, Alvin Reeves will continue to serve the remaining one-year term, at which time to be eligible to succeed themselves. Current members Linda Derrick William Powell will continue to serve the remaining two-year term, at which time they will be eligible to succeed themselves. A new member Clarence Walker is requested to be appointed to serve a two-year term. And new members Darlene Rudolph, Avina Phillips, and Lauren Henry are requested to be appointed to a three-year term. Our ordinance does require that the terms of those commission members be staggered. And so this fulfills that staggered term limitation. So we would ask for your favorable vote. And just as an additional point of clarity, you know, I provided last week at the work session that we have been working with the Historic Commission to ensure that we're fully in compliance with the ordinance in terms of meetings, in terms of the composition of the board, as well as how that, that commission functions. We have reached out to the Alabama Historical Commission, who has provided us with some resources in regards to training. So once we get the new members on board, we will be able to get them trained, as well as provide refresher to our current members. And we have received some really good resources from Mobile, as well as Montgomery, in how to make sure that our process is standardized in our review of certificates of appropriateness. And so at this time, we ask for your favorable vote.
Thank you. We're going to have Ms. Jamie Thomas.
As the body of the legislature, I was reading that that was the council's appointment.
Councilwoman Thomas, can you speak up? I have a problem here.
As the legislative body of this municipality, the board appointed, read that that was the, it could be, that's the council appointment. So I'm trying to, I'd like to, I'd like, I'd like to go by according to what, what, what I read in, you know, under our legislative law duties where we are appointed. I understand, yes, the mayor can request of this body of the council to take this into consideration. But that is a council appointment.
President Young, I can read the ordinance. It says the Historic Commission shall be composed of nine members appointed by the mayor and ratified by the city council. All members shall be residents of the city of Selma, Alabama, and shall be persons who have demonstrated training or experience in history, architecture, plant archaeological, archaeology, or law, or shall be residents of a historic district and/or show a keen interest, experience, and dedication to present direct mission.
Thank you. Ms. Wood, I think the work session, I'm trying to remember. I think I requested a copy of the information concerning the current terms of the individuals that are serving on the commission. I wanted minutes or something, I wanted something showing when they were appointed and how long their terms were. I haven't received it until my knowledge yet. Do you know the status of that request?
Um, yes, sir. I don't have that information in my possession either. I did speak with Ms. Sandy in the clerk's office today, and she was going to search laser fish and give me something. And so she has not said that as of right now, so I'm not sure if she was able to find that information at this time.
However, what we're doing is, in the resolution, we're trying to cure the deficit in this by assigning the staggering appointments now with the existing members, those who are still there, and then adding additional members to complete the three-phase staggered term. You know, I don't want to really beat a dead horse, but I think we all know that, you know, we've had some trouble record-keeping and, and the documentation for a lot of this stuff. So some of it, we are able to, to, you know, to, to recreate resurrect. Some of it, we're not, the timeliness of this, we just haven't been able to find it. So we're just going forward with this recommendation, this resolution that recommends a curing of this situation so that we can go forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Thomas?
From my understanding, whereas in this resolution, it says vacancies on the commission shall be filled by a person nominated by the mayor and appointed by the city council. Should a point, shall be for an expiration term of a member to replace. Members should be eligible to be re-elected by the governing body to succeed theirself in office. A majority of the members, of the members of the commission shall consist of a quorum to be transferred, obviously no vacancies in this membership. Of the commission shall be inherent the right of a quorum to exercise all of the power and the duties of the commission. So from what I've been reading, I, I like to stay, I understand what the mayor is saying that with the positions there to be placed, to be placed there. But when you have already have duties of other legislator, I would like for him to respect and the honor of the council of this body that require. True enough, you can recommend, but I would like for, for this body to have a say-so of you, because you already have done up the resolution. And this, we have a body of council people that might not be aware of, that we need a little more time to make sure. What's our place as the legislative body that is already written by the law, already in there? So that's my problem that I have. I understand when a department head direct comes from each department with a resolution of recommendation by the mayor for us to take this into consideration of placing these people. But meantime, that we have litigation that we, as the body of the council, should have a voice on what it says in our legislative law.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. I have another, Councilwoman, I have a Councilwoman Randolph, a Councilwoman Christie Thomas wants to speak. So Councilwoman Randolph.
Yeah, um, I'm not aware of council making those appointments. Because in the past, it's always been a recommendation of the mayor, and then we affirm it when it comes to the council. But for us, the council, during the process, putting things on the board, every board that I know of that the city appointed, it always comes from the mayor. I mean, that's how it has been since I've been on the council. But if it changed, I don't know what, what ordinance you're looking at, but Ms. Wood got one that says different. So, you know, we got two different ordinances. But like I said, since I've been on the council, the mayor always voted a recommendation to us, and then we vote. But if we're going to change it, we can change it.
No, we're asking you to stop.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Let, as a reminder, tonight, we're not going to speak over two times on the same issue so that we can be efficient with our time. So let's remember that. So remember where you responded, what number of times you responded to. So you did say something, but I think, Councilwoman Thomas, respond, and then we got to go to Councilwoman Christie Thomas's way. So go ahead, Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
I understand what you're saying, Councilwoman Randolph. I understand what you're saying, but when you have bylaws, that's our problem. You're talking about the past of which, that you're saying what you've done in the past. But when you know better and you find the bylaws and the correct, what they have here written, this is what I go by. I know you've been on the, on the panel longer than I have, but as a person, this is my second term. And when it comes to this, this was just brought before the body of council. And so we have to go and do our own research and find out to make sure that we are doing the right thing. It's, I understand where you're coming from, but when I see something that different there, like you said, she has one different, and I see something different, which we have our selected reading in our manual that we all should take interest in to look upon and to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Just for clarification, I requested at the work session to get a copy of all of the board, the boards and who have the appointment power and the names. So I'm still waiting on that. So I, I think the council, to be fair with the council, we should all know what our appointment powers are and, and which board we can appoint. So with that being said, I would make a motion to table it until we get that information.
Okay. Councilwoman Christie Thomas, you know, I'm with you. I would like to know it also. But again, we have to reconstruct this information. I have, I did reach out to former city attorney, Jay Nunn, because I recall when I was in office before, we prepared a document that includes the information you were requesting. I don't have it. It's not something that we are holding back from the council. And when we get all of it, and we identify, and we get all of it, we will deliver it to the council as well. In the meantime, as we go through this process, until we get all of it, we are identifying them as we can. The Historic Commission's appointment authority, we have identified along. And that's what Ms. Wood has recited. And so I'm not convinced that we need to delay this decision because we don't know all the others. I agree with Councilwoman Randolph, he is right. Counsel, I do not agree with Councilwoman Jamie Thomas. Ms. Wood, that's something that she misses, she, about this. Ms. Wood?
I was just going to, yes, sir, I was just going to clarify, there is not really, I know two things, lots of different circumstances. So what I read was the appointment power for the Historic Development Commission. What Councilwoman Thomas read was how do you fill vacancies on the commission?
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Carmichael, then I need to get a company. Go ahead, Councilman Carmichael.
I just wanted, wanted to point that out, that us, we're filling vacancies here. And, and if I read correctly, in that same code, new appointments come on October 1st of the, of the year. And just want to get this straight, Mayor. You insinuate that the commission is not operating properly or something? Is that, is this something that, is it an emergency that we get this going? It seems like there's enough board members on the commission to continue. And I'm just wondering if there's some kind of situation there that we have to push this through?
No, I think we got past the crisis that we had in previous meetings. We were able to work through that administratively. That issue is resolved. But that issue pushed this resolution to the top of our pile. And Councilmen, we're just ticking them off as we go. If council was not willing to deal with this one tonight, that's fine. But it is handicapping the Historic Commission. We have a lot of opportunities that we are, that we are looking at, including code enforcement within the Historic District and several other things. And the longer we prolong this, the greater the challenge we're going to have in getting, getting all the people at the table so that, so that the commission can actually fully function.
Okay, thank you. What I want to comment was on, it is similar to what Councilwoman Jamie Thomas read. Now, it's in that section 2.256, which addresses exactly what Mrs. Wood responded about, and also what Councilwoman Thomas. It's under commission, membership, officers, and leaders. And I think Councilman Carmichael has established that we do have individuals that are currently serving on the commission. It's my assumption that there are five that are currently serving on this commission. And if you look at subsection 2.256, and you go to subsection, let's see here, subsection F, it clearly states that vacancies on the commission shall be filled by the persons nominated by the mayor and appointed by the city council. So those are the individuals that are currently serving on the commission, those five that are currently served. They, and I don't know if I missed something, that's why we have this means to help connect dots. But I would think that they could actually appoint vacancies themselves. If you look at section 2.256, subsection H, that's, that would be my understanding. One reason I asked, I wanted to try to get an overview of this entire situation. That's why I requested the terms for the individuals that are currently serving, because that would help me. I have some hesitation on approving the resolution right now because it might be a situation where the five that are currently serving could fill those vacancies. And as Councilman Carmichael stated, October 1st is when whatever appointment could take place. So I don't have, in my opinion, I don't feel comfortable enough making a vote on this personally right now because of the unknown and the information that I found, and also to my reading of the law, which is section 2.256, subsection H. I know that Councilwoman Christie Thomas did make a motion, and I didn't have an opportunity to ask, was there a second? It tabled, thank you. So it was moved by Councilwoman Christie Thomas and properly seconded by Councilwoman Harville to table this now. Are we ready for a question? Roll call, Madam Clerk, for table.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman James.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
And thank you, Madam Clerk, for those votes. I just got to know attorney Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe last work session, first of all, it is the oddest occasion I've seen where just about everybody has spoken, has been right. Councilman Carmichael asked me to check the language of appointment versus approval, approval versus appointment as it relates to nominating, selecting, and then replacing. Councilwoman Thomas asked for all of the board, existing boards, capacity of the boards, appointment powers of the boards.
And terms.
Terms of the board members serving. By the way, the mayor asked me for the same thing a few days ago. The way I read the ordinance for the Historic Commission, the count, the mayor gets to name people to the commission, that's clear. The council gets to approve people to the commission, once they're named. The second question was the question of replacement of individual members on the Historic Development Commission. And, and it's somewhat different from other commissions in that the people, the character of the people on the commission reflect the kind of topics and functions they're overseeing, which, which makes plenty of sense. I believe I said, and I don't believe I know I said in the last meeting, that whether the mayor nominated and the council was appointed, the mayor nominated and the council approved originally, and the mayor nominated and the council appointed, it was going to boil down to the same thing. I also said I would do some due diligence on it, and I got so stuck with the Attorney General's opinions, about six of them, for a previous request, that I didn't do that due diligence, but I will. The question about the, the efficiency or the effectiveness of the board is a really serious one. The first item on my report last Thursday night was the report on Dr. Fullford's request for COA. The reason that request was treated the way it was, and in most people's, reasonable people's opinions was, was not adequately addressed, was because of some failures endemic to that board as it existed. There was not a written record of board action. There was not an official meeting of the board. There were five members of the board, and I think that does constitute a quorum, so they can operate. But the method of operation came into question, which is why the mayor is doing what he's doing tonight. It's up to this body to vote the way you want to, table it or not, but I suspect, I s- But I suspect, I, I suggest that it be dealt with sooner than later because of the fact that the person who presented herself last meeting presented herself due to those problems of procedure or lack thereof on the board. So, so it's, there's some serious problems there. That's what the mayor is trying to address. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. We tabled it, uh, for now. I think we will bring it up in our subsequent work session. I think we will be dealing with it sooner rather than later, but it has been tabled right now. So can we proceed with our next items, please?
Well, to be clear, uh, what, uh, questions we need to answer in the next work session related to this issue?
I know, for me, I would like to know the current members that are serving on the commission, how do I minutes, resolutions, or whatever information that we have relate to their specific appointment? When they were appointed, and the information related to their appointment. And also, the likes of clarity as to are these being, are these vacancies actually being filled? Because I need some more clear legal understanding, because if you're looking at section 2.256, subsection H, it's saying if it's a vacancy, then the current individuals that are on the commission would have the authority to make those choices. So I guess I need to make sure that that is correct, and if so, uh, that commission needs to do its job and select those individuals, uh, to serve those things. Thank you. All right, um, if we can move on to our next item, that'd be great.
The next item, an update, uh, on the concessionaire agreement. Ms. Wood, go here. Item 10. You're gonna have that unmuted. We'll come back to that item.
Uh, Mayor, is it the same, is, is, has anything changed to the work session on Thursday regarding this update?
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right.
She, she is unmuted now. She can proceed. Item 10.
Yes, sir. Um, item 10 is an update on the, um, request or proposal submitted by Mr. Jim Lewis Braden and associates for, um, a concessionaire agreement. The city of Selma moved for the song, Selma Park. Um, I think I put around, uh, his proposal out of Radlin Hospital, leased the park, the song Selma Park, for $100 annually for a term of 10 years, and he wanted to be renewable at the option of the tenant, so at his option. Um, the second condition is a to-be-formed affiliate of Radlin would use its best efforts to complete a renovation of the park, um, for fast casual restaurant and other uses. And the third is for a to-be-formed affiliate of Radlin to use its best efforts to finalize, um, and financing. Um, they propose for a single-story building or a shipping container, um, to be the structure for this casual restaurant. Um, they're requesting 10 months for design approvals and construction, and they anticipate five associates at an average rate of $10 per hour. Um, in previous conversations with the council, I have expressed, um, that I think the best way to move forward with this request would be to enter into a concessionaire agreement where we are not actually leasing a public park, but where we enter a concessionaire agreement with that tenant to provide services, um, on that, on that, like within the park, but not leasing ownership, um, of the park. And so we will move forward, um, with working out an agreement with Mr. Jim Lewis, um, and read those recommendations and terms back to the council once they have been, um, determined. And as well as to the, um, Public Buildings Committee if it needs to be so. Um, the second item is their request or proposal for purchase of Verb Schools. Um, and in that proposal, the request from Radlin Hospitality is to have a to-be-formed affiliate to purchase the school and the adjacent playground from the city of Selma for an appraised value. Uh, for the purchase, at closing, the city will finance the purchase price in an unsecured note for that to-be-formed affiliate. The note will accrue 4% interest, um, commencing upon the latter of the reopening of the school, um, and the purpose would be for, um, basically residential, um, multifamily occupant, occupied units. Um, from the city's perspective, we're gonna continue to work with Mr. Lewis and Radlin to come up with a, um, purchase agreement. Um, we're gonna move forward. I spoke with Attorney Madison, uh, with the process of how does the city, um, move forward with acquisition. Uh, we would need to do an appraisal, and we would need to follow commercial, um, acquisition procedures. So if you guys have any questions about those, too, um, at this time, we'll take questions.
Okay, I'm gonna ask questions, but, um, I have a suggestion, a recommendation. I think you said it best, uh, Ms. Wood. If you could, for these two proposals, if you could get with the Public Buildings Committee, uh, and that's under the leadership of Councilwoman Jane Thomas. If you could get with those proposals and all the information, because I'm glad you shared that with us. I think that's great. But it'd be great to see that information get right here as well. I think if you could get with, uh, Councilwoman Jane Thomas with that information, she could possibly put that on a Public Buildings Committee meeting, and those things that we discussed at a meeting, and then a recommendation to come from that committee for the entire council to approve it later that. I think that that would run a lot smoother, and I thank you for the work that your department is doing. I think if you got with Mrs. Thomas, I think she said in the last work session, she is planning to have a Public Buildings Committee in the near future. So I think if you could get that, that'd be great. Council Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mayor, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure you're comfortable and you okay with this. Uh, there was a committee that was formed back here some years ago, uh, when we, when they got together to name the park after the first black mayor. Uh, this, when he was, wasn't the mayor, I think there was other, uh, mayors, I'm not sure what's the mayor, Evans or Mayor Melton at the time, when we took a vote on that, and I think we voted, um, unanimous, but everybody did, and, and agreed to that. Uh, also, uh, Mr. Henry Thompson, uh, was in the process against the finding, uh, done to, with your name up, hoping going over the park and selling to take the song of Selma down, and supposed to be the giant program junior up there. Uh, where we at with that? Is, is that still getting done? I haven't heard anything from Mr. Thompson with that, uh, with the name been done, uh. So I'm pretty sure that you, you okay with this, Mayor, uh, doing this to the park after it was, the committee was getting formed, uh, supposed to get a buck down and everything, and, and to have it in that park, so, um...
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Can I just say, really, put a proposal in there? We're not at the point where we have a recommendation to present. We have not even started associations, um, with Mr. Jim Lewis, and we have not started, um, researching the legal means of how we can do this without attorneys.
Okay, but could you please give me an update later on the name, on the army that with the mayor's name could be on it? Uh, from Mr. Thompson, uh, that we met, uh, the gentleman that was coming through this years ago. Uh, and I would have thought it would've been done by now, but, um, it happened two years ago almost. But, uh, could you please, uh, follow that, give an update and see where we're at with that, please? With the name of the park?
Your question is regarding the, the new name of the park.
Right, right, because I think I'm updating, not saying the songs itself, but, uh, it's supposed to be, uh, the...
Yes, sir.
Right, I'm just trying to get an update on that, see where we're at with that, but that was, was in the work, probably in the work two years ago, a long one.
Yes, sir. We will do that.
All right, thank you.
And thank, and Ms. Wood, thank you for offering that further clarification about the status and where it is. I think if you keep Councilwoman Jane Thomas in the loop as chair of Public Buildings, I think that would make things move very efficiently, uh, so...
Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you all so much.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Carmichael.
Just because you mentioned it, well, it was, is there a specific reason, uh, why we would sell a piece of real estate and then take back that unsecured note instead of having, instead of having a security?
Do you have to speak? I recognize the mic, please, in here.
I do apologize. Was there a reason why?
That's okay. Thank you, Council.
Yeah, sure. Is there a reason, is there a specific reason why we'd sell a piece of real estate, uh, finance it, uh, with an unsecured note, why we would not take a security interest in the property? Is he, is he planning on doing, pledging to real estate, um, to seek additional financing to recondition the property? What, what's the...
Well, Councilwoman Carmichael, that's what I was mentioning.
Sorry, that's okay. That'd be cool.
What I was mentioning is that, what I was raising was simply the proposal that was admitted by Ms. Wood.
Let me get working on that.
The city has not begun to negotiate any terms at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood, and we're clear on that. Thank you. All right?
Also, I would simply point out that item 11, uh, is the building. Item 10 is not.
Oh, thank you.
I'm not sure about item 10 going to Public Buildings, uh, probably no, it's, uh, will be to move forward. Uh, item 12, um, was, uh, approved in the consent agenda. Uh, that then gets us down to the treasurer's report. Ms. Oliver, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I was sending an email to you, um, earlier today, and you have a hard copy in your box. Tomorrow, we're gonna begin our sales taxes for the month of April. Uh, total collected $1,110,806.80, which is up from last year of $949,856. And the difference is $161,721.74. And our larger tax, we are still down, collected this month is $30,462.16. Last year, we had $47,578.93, which is a difference of $17,116.77. Our tobacco tax is actually up this year. This month, it's $37,854.91. Last... year in April, $1,003.15.52. Our larger tax, whose occupancy is down, and it's $11,926.48, uh, compared to last year at $22,359.01, which is a difference of $10,432.53. Our half-cent sales tax is up this month, April, for 138,858.6. Last year, April was $118,635.63, which is the difference of $20,215.23. The simplified seller's use tax for the month of April is $79,54.59. Last year for April was $55,484.97, which is an increase in a difference of $23,569.62. Our municipal age street gas tax, um, is down for the month of April. For this month, collections is $14,749.65. Last year was $16,288.56, which is a difference of $1,005.38.91. Our revealed gas ta, tax for April is $8,377.12, which is up from last year of $6,475.95, which is a difference of $1,009.17. If we look at our bank balance report, we show that our total collection, collection in our bank is $14,132,529.16, of which $6,799,337.58 is the general fund balance, which is used for general fund expenses, operating expenses of the city. Our revenue collection for the month of April is $2,630.46. Our total, um, checks for our payment register for operating payroll, we have opened, uh, 271, um, checks for a total of $1,435,513.67. We have, um, 5.47,851,030 cents, which is the total count of 276, with $1,505,948.7. This is, uh, my report for this month of April.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Council?
I think Councilwoman Jane Thomas answered.
Uh, Ms. Oliver?
Yeah?
I noticed you said that the tobacco tax had, uh, what, what, uh, happened there? Was it, uh, the business picked up more, or was it that, uh, our new tax collector went out to, to see if we were, they were using the staff? Because it was real low last year.
That would be a question for our tax collector, because they, they collect that tax. I merely just reported it. But I will get her to, will give you some clarity on that.
Any other questions, Council?
All right, Councilwoman Carmichael?
Uh, yes, in the, uh, Department 6,000, account 52720, which is a modification, uh, for grass cutting and trash pickup expenses for the, for the wards. As y'all know, I've had some questions about that over the last few weeks, and, uh, since we're here, I figure I might as well take a look at it a little closer. Uh, the, um, this report, this April report changes a pretty good bit from the March report. Uh, but it's, but it's not, uh, even across the board. It looks like there's some changes there in the amendments, uh, but some have gone up, some have gone down. And I'm just curious if you can explain those.
Um, sorry, uh, which, which county are you talking about?
Department 6,000, uh, account 52720. Page 6. Page 5 and 6.
Okay, what is your question?
Uh, looking at the, uh, March report, uh, it looks like that, that the funds had rolled over, and, uh, and then, and, and the April report, they're no longer rolling over, and there's, uh, there's different expenditures or different amounts for each ward in there. Uh, and I'm just curious what the, what the change is on there, why, why some are, are grabbing some on.
We, I think we talked about this last time, um, that that grass cutting was not in the budget, that the mayor approved, that the council approved, that the mayor presented, so we had to go in and make some adjustments for that. But there were some, um, expenditures that had been spent prior to this budget being approved, so we had to make the adjustment so that they could be covered.
Okay, so, so, so y'all, y'all went ahead and took the expenses out of this, but it looks like some of the, the entire 5,000 of the amount that would have rolled over, uh, was, was taken out completely.
Some of whom were taken out because it was not in the budget that you all approved.
Okay.
The money that you're showing is having actually been spent, Councilman, was spent before the budget was approved.
Okay, well, the, that, that budget was approved at the end of February, I believe? At the, uh, special, last special coming in February? And then, and then I got this, this other performance report that I'm looking at is the file in March. And, and then, and then I'm looking at the other file, April, and, uh, and I also will point out some... Uh, and, and then, and then I'm looking at the other file, April, and, um, and I also want to point out some, some minutes. Um. So, I just, I want this to be noted here in these notes. The, uh, looks like on August, uh, twenty-fifth. Uh, let's see, that's, that's when they, uh, that's when the council, August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, the council approved five thousand dollar transfer from general fund account to account, um, let's see, one point six zero zero two, five-two-seven-two-zero. Um, and this was for forty-five thousand dollars for a notification in total.
August, August of, August of last year, Councilor?
That's correct, and then, uh, and then in September, uh, September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, um, there were, there were two, two votes taken, uh, that the leftover funds, um, allocated to each ward be, be carried over.
Councilman, uh, August and September of twenty-twenty was in the prior fiscal year. Uh, and, uh, we did make, uh, some adjustments as we prepared this budget, because we did, uh, and as we explained in the previous meeting, uh, these grass cutting items that you're looking at, uh, we were not, uh, it's, this is when the council was doing contracts, uh, for grass cutting, and we, we are not in a position to continue that practice. And so, these funds were zeroed out once the budget was passed. Uh, but monies had already been spent in this fiscal year based on what the previous council had done, because this council adopted that previous council's, uh, 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 budget. When we came back with the new budget that we proposed, uh, those numbers were no longer there.
What, what I'm, what I'm saying is that they, they voted to carry forward and roll over these funds to the next fiscal, fiscal year, so, uh, last year's funds that were still in there into the fiscal year would roll over into this budget, whether we approved it, any, any new ones or not. And I, I mean, I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear on that, and, and, you know, I'm sure it will take some more investigating. We can't figure it out right now, but I just want to make sure that Maggie Attorney Madison's aware of these minutes and the vote that was taken, and, uh, the issue within this account, and so hopefully we can get it all straightened out and make sure that we, uh, we have what's supposed to be in there.
Councilman, are you suggesting that your vote on the budget should not, was not a valid vote? When you approved this budget?
Uh, we didn't, we didn't vote for accounts to be empty. We just voted for the, the budget as a, as an outlook on expenses. That doesn't mean we empty accounts when we vote on, on a new budget. So, so there's, so there's funds that roll over into account, then they should stay there. Now, this, they're voted to roll over into the next fiscal year, is what the vote was taken.
All right, uh, as not to belabor the point, uh, tonight, I think you said something, Councilman Michael, give us an opportunity to further look into this. I don't think we're going to get a direct question, but if you could maybe put that question maybe in the form of an email and submit that to the mayor and also to, uh, the attorney, uh, we can keep following up on it, um, so we can move on to our next items. Oh, go ahead, Councilman Harvey.
I have a question for the treasurer also. Uh, in the work session, we discussed, uh, requested, uh, budget documents, preferably C S V, if not P D F, whatever we could get. Um, Ms. Oliver, you stated you were sure that the system would do that. Um, did you have any chance to reach out to New World and get any additional information on being able to print out, uh, download a budget report or something? Did you hear that?
Now, treasurer, could you hear Councilman Harvey?
Did not.
Oh, you, you might need to go.
During the work session, we requested, uh, budget information, um, and you suggested that you didn't know how or the system could not download the budget, um, so if it could be given to us, my question to you was, did you reach out to New World for some assistance on how to, how to download the budget?
In that was a discussion in the work session, uh, Councilman, about, uh, getting that, uh, budget in spreadsheet format, less the formulas. Uh, that information was forwarded, uh, to, uh, from my office to, uh, the council secretary, I believe, um, um, I, I believe, I believe she, I believe you, I, I, uh, I, Councilman Carmichael, I think, had asked about it again today, and I think we re-forwarded it, showing the, uh, the email thread. It had been forwarded prior. Uh, I'm not really, you know, I'm not sure if this is, it could be an email issue again, I don't know. Uh, because I did not stop to try to look into it. I did make sure that the information was forwarded to, to the council as requested. In fact, I think we emailed that, uh, Don sent, uh, out, was sent the next day. It was not a delayed send.
I, I guess my question is, do we know how to download the budget out of the New World financial system? Did we reach out to New World? Because the answer that I got was no, it cannot be done. And subsequently, I'm not trying to be a smart one, uh, I called New World myself, and I estimated that it would take thirty seconds to download it, and supports it would take about fifteen seconds, because it's two clicks of a button.
Um, um, are you asking for, are you asking for another report from New World? Is that what you're asking for?
I was told, dear, we were told during the work session that the software would not download the budget in either a P D F form or a C S V form. I said, did it?
I couldn't be talking about, I, I think we maybe, maybe I'm confused. I thought we were talking about two different things. I thought the request, this was.
We made a request. Ms. Oliver said it couldn't be.
The specific request was, I, I thought you all wanted the budget in the spreadsheet format that you received when the budget was passed, and that's what, and that's what I made sure you got. Are you asking now, is it, is not? Are you saying you wanted the budget from the New World system?
You can go in the New World system and download whatever, and download whatever the budget is in the system can be downloaded into C V F, C S V form that we, that can be distributed to us so we can have. I'm just, you know, the.
Okay, okay, because when you, when you, when we talked about the New World system in the work session, I believe I mentioned the budget's an actual report was carrying the budget, but you're asking for a different budget report out of the New World system.
Well, we asked for the budget. You mentioned that it did, that we get the actual budget, and we stated that's not necessarily what we want. We want the budget. Uh, and it was insinuated that we didn't know how to get it out of there, didn't know that we could get it out of there. Um, so I did follow-up work and confirmed that we can have it downloaded in, in either a P D F or C S V file. It's just a matter of two clicks of the button. If, uh, Ms. Oliver will, and she is on the contact list, or if she calls New World, um, I can show where the two buttons that she needs to click to download it in C S V form so it could be given to us.
Okay, this, this is, okay, I, I, you know, so, so I guess what I said to you is not what you requested, but I thought, well, and I'm really not trying to be flippant, because I really did take the time to divert that spreadsheet that the budget to the data without the formulas. That's, because I thought that's what you all were asking for. Uh, I hear, now, I'm hearing this request, which you want the budget printed out of New World's software, and again, when we talked about that before, what I mentioned was the budget's an actual report. Uh, I know that there are other reports in the New World system, but I, I, I spoke to and responded to what I thought you were saying at the time. Uh, but we'll go back and then, uh, pull down the budget reports from the New World, uh, system, and, uh, uh, but I did send out what I thought you asked for, and that was the spreadsheet less the formulas.
We, we haven't received that.
You have not received it?
No, sorry. I'm looking at my email right now.
No, no, well, I, I, I am, I am one hundred percent certain it was sent out this time.
Okay, okay, well, we'll get it taken care of. Councilman Harvey, did you have anything else to follow up? Thank you for your research. Great, Councilman Harvey.
I just want to request maybe a list of, of what, uh, formats we could get out of the New World system. If you, if you could get that, that, maybe that would help, just so we can see, uh, see what, what we're looking at here. I mean, I, I just want to be clear on, on everything, so if we can get maybe a list of, of what type of formats we can get created out of that system.
That's fine. Don, uh, would you, Don, would you unmute and speak to the email transfer of that spreadsheet, of that information, that affected information to the council?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. The, um, the spreadsheet in question was actually emailed out on May seventh, and that was the day after the work session, and I made the decision to send it directly to Ms. Nikki Ellen. I thought that, that would be a better option, since we normally forth from a lot, and typically when we, um, do so, we say receive when we, um, get information from each other. So I just thought that would be a better option, so I actually emailed her on May seventh, at nine fifteen A M., and then I posted a, a, um, an email to Carmichael this morning, saying that he never received it, so I just forwarded the email that I sent to her, to him, actually twice, because I was having to, the mayor and the person.
And you didn't get either one of those emails, uh, Councilor?
Uh, I got your email that night after the work session that said, you know, that said what you said, that came from mayoroffice@summer-al.gov. That's the only one I've got regarding the budget. That's the only email. Okay.
Okay, well, we'll get you back with that and make sure that everybody gets their copies and thank you to everybody, and we'll get that resolved. Can we move on to the next items on our attorney?
Yes, we, we're finished with the financial report, and the city attorney.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, great, just one thing, uh, uh, Mayor, uh, Ms. Wu, does she still online?
Uh, I, I'm not sure about, you know, uh, yeah.
Well, yeah, the question I want to ask was, um,
Who's still there?
Uh, uh, two months ago, uh, along, uh, Mr. Henry Thompson, uh, asked, I'm not sure if he asked all the council, but he did ask me to go around and, and, and my ward during the storm, and all the trees that was inside the residence that normally sit at, um, public work going and rebuild the trees, and, uh, some kind of grant was been coming from down from the state. Uh, he said one hundred, the since sure, but told me, uh, recognize all the residents that got trees down in their yard, and, uh, write them down, send them to address, and I'm just trying to see, uh, what we at with that, because the residents is calling me, but they hadn't, they need to get the trees up out of their backyard or in their front yard, because they can't get it forwarded, but they want to know if that's, um, if that's going to happen, or if there's a funding going to be for that, uh, but I, I texted Mr. Thompson, he never did, uh, respond back to me. I called, and I, I'm not sure, I hadn't seen him, I'm not sure he's still on payroll, but anyway, I'm trying to see what's wrong with that, uh, if I can let my resident and my ward know what's wrong with the, um, is there any grant money will be happening to citizen, uh, of all wards with the trees in their yards that, that came down from the storm.
Mr. Thompson's still on the payroll, and they're active, on vacation this week.
Okay.
I'm not, uh, I, I don't know that I can answer that question. I will get an answer for it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. That's impressive. Thank you. Great, Councilman Harvey, do you want to check the report?
I, I got a question for the mayor. Uh, I think at our last council meeting, uh, last, uh, before work session, uh, they said we're going to start contracting, uh, grass cutting, and I was trying to see how that, how's that coming along, uh, get some bids on the grass cutting?
Yes, sir, see, I mean, along with speaking, well, um, I think that we'll be, uh, having, uh, releasing the R and P probably, uh, first of next week, sometime.
Okay, so, um.
Next week, uh, and R and P is going to call for a briefing conference where we will be able to, uh, call in all of the landscaping companies that would be interested in it, and they will be able to, uh, they will get and explain how the process will work, and, uh, and they have an opportunity to bid on the, on those, on those, uh, on those, uh, at grass cutting projects.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, uh, uh, Chairman's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, President, and y'all, ladies and gentlemen, the city council, good evening, and ladies and gentlemen, in the, uh, audience. Uh, I'm going to take my cues from the same report out form I have for the work session. Uh, item one was covered already. The executive session, I believe, is due to come up after the report. Uh, item three was information purposes only. Item four was approved on the consent agenda. Item five, Juneteenth holiday. Uh, I sent you a copy of ordinance, the council, a copy of ordinance one-on-one dash nineteen slash twenty. There's a question as to the actual vote, as concerning whether or not it was actually taken by the previous council. I was a little impressed that it had taken place. I'm being informed, uh, by a clerk that the records did not reflect the actual vote, but only the first read of the ordinance last year. I think it was around August of the last year that it was introduced, and what I did was sent you a copy of the ordinance. I'm going to suggest, and this is suggestion only for the council, as to decide, uh, what it will or will not do, but I'm going to suggest instead of my reading tonight, it should be the second time, and then have it read again next week at, at the work session, that you review the ordinance. The only thing I think, I believe, since I drafted it, the only thing I think that's going to have to change is probably the ordinance number, the date of June nineteen, twenty twenty, because we're already in twenty twenty-one, and, uh, the signature spaces on the tax sheet, signature spaces actually include the last council member's signature spaces. That's how far I got in introducing it. It was placed on first read, and there is a dispute as to actual minutes reflecting the vote, so that being the case, I'm going to suggest that this council either approve and ratify or vote on an ordinance after first read is coming work session. Uh, I'll make the necessary changes and introduce that to you. In the meantime, as I said, basically, the only thing that'll change is the ordinance number, the date of June nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, but it has tremendous impact after you read it in that a, a municipal holiday is being declared in this ordinance, a paid municipal holiday with the council deciding. A paid municipal holiday with the council deciding if that date, June nineteen, falls on a weekend, Saturday or Sunday, which day Friday or Monday will actually be considered the day approved for city employees to take off. Uh, those are the highlights, and I hope the lowlights too, since, uh, this question.
Attorney, can you send that to us again before this next work session?
I can send it to you as a recent, as soon as tomorrow, Thursday, uh, tomorrow, what's tomorrow, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday.
Because I called once, I printed up everything, and I didn't have that in my name, so if you could just resend that.
And, and it's just that it may be sent separately, but it was sent. I'll resend it. I'll resend it, corrected, updated version.
That'd be great, and then that way we will have that in front of us before Thursday and be the next council.
Well before Thursday.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, uh, and again, I thought this was a problem that already been addressed and, uh, will address it. The, uh, next item on the report, item number six, was already addressed in the consent agenda as well as number seven. Uh, number eight is a resolution that was requested, but I want the council to tell me what they would like to do, what their pleasure is with the resolution. And, um, I think it's going to be, well, it's up to the council to decide what to do with their resolution.
Okay, we can take it up. Uh, council, in the attorney's report, there was resolution R one forty-five dash twenty slash twenty-one. It was the appointment of the city clerk, and Councilwoman Jane Thomas, she brought this up, she brought this to our attention. And this resolution was drafted, uh, after she got with the attorney. Uh, Councilwoman Thomas, anything you would like to comment on before our attorney vote?
No, at least we just need to vote on it.
Okay, uh, are there any questions, council? Oh, this is resolution R one forty-five twenty slash twenty-one, appointment of city clerk. And what we would do is we would be appointing Ms. Harrison, her full appointment.
And, and Councilor Randolph submitted with the work session information.
Yeah, it came up, we talked about it in work session. So that said, uh, that's what it is, there's a second, alright. Wow, I can't, I can't tell who did that, but I'm going to say it. Councilwoman Jane Thomas. Uh, it was moved by Councilor Randolph, roughly seconded by Councilwoman Jane Thomas, uh, to approve resolution R one forty-five dash twenty slash twenty-one, appointment of city clerk. All right, quick question. Roll call, Madam Clark.
President Yon?
Yes.
Councilor Harfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane?
Yes.
Councilor Randolph?
Yes.
Councilor Jimmison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Janet Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank, and thank you too, thank you, Madam.
Thank you, council.
Alright, thank you, Madam. Alright, uh, with that said, I think, uh, attorney, the only item that you have left?
No, there's one that I did not include on the list that was brought to my attention, is recently, actually brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago, but I don't think it made it onto my report a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
It's an audit management representation letter, signature requirement that created some problems for the city in the twenty, on the occasion of the twenty eighteen audit. Uh, every audit has as a requirement that a management representation letter be signed by the appropriate authority or representative of the city. Uh, the fact that there was not already signature at the end of the audit threw things into chaos. The audit was actually in position to be approved and, and without a lot of fanfare. But that failure to have a signature on the management, management representation letter threw the city into a, a state of financial confusion. This council has, has the policymaking body, legislative and policymaking body, the city itself, responsibility to determine policy, especially, especially in the instance where it involves some serious finances. So I'm going to represent to the council that the treasurer and I can present to the appropriate committee of this body, which I believe will be the finance committee, uh, recommendations as a way to approach a resolution to resolve that and keep it moving again.
Just be sure, Ben. Sorry. Just be sure to include the request for signature. I want to see the verbiage in that document.
Sure.
It, it, uh, we have to accept some, we have to accept some, by signature, we have to accept probably, um, some things that, I, I just, I, I would like to see what the letter says. So just include the letter that requests the signature.
Sure, sure. I'll make notation of that.
Yes, Councilwoman James. The resolution that you're drawing up now as the interim treasurer, that means that when we do, uh, get the new tre- when we receive our new treasurer again, you will have to come back with that re- resolution to redo the treasury. Because if you use it, if you put your, the interns, uh, signature on this resolution, and when we bring in the treasurer, then you will have to come back if you do that, that re- that resolution.
Miss, I, I think we can name the active treasurer as the authoritative signature.
Well, I think.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. The reason why I ask this is because he's bringing before, he's bringing this resolution before the body. And you're saying that, that we will have where you and the interim treasurer now, the active treasurer now. And then whereabouts, it needs to be on there, that where, that when our, our active treasurer again, so we won't have to do another revolution.
Is it, do you understand that I'm asking for me, all the interim treasurer to be the sign, the signatory for that purpose?
They're just going to bring it to the, they're just going to bring it to us, they're going to bring it to the.
No, I'm just asking the question.
Yes, yes, Councilwoman Carmichael's response and my, I believe, my question are, are appropriate. We were not going to bring an individual to the council to approve for a signatory. We were going to bring recommendations as to how that process could proceed, but you would decide what the policy is.
That's not what I asked you. I did not say bring a body or somebody's signature to sign off.
You want to respond to that, and then we need to?
I, I, I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, again, what I'm hearing is we're not going to bring the name nor a person to the council. I'm boy stood in a position, whoever sent that position would be approved as a signatory. Or an alternate signatory, but the point is you need a process to prevent that management representation from being, from a failure to sign again. And the city literally having its bomb rating affected, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, Mr. King, I think it's going to take special concession on these last audits that we're behind on. It's going to take some special concession, concession to sign those, and then we will have a procedure going forward.
And that's what, and that's what I would, you know what I'm talking about.
I think I get your meaning too, if you, if you're talking about a new treasurer coming in, yes, that individual will be identified as, as someone who can have.
Consideration, not concession of some.
Alright, we'll continue to answer that. Uh, attorney, is there anything else other than the executive session on the report?
No.
Okay, with that said, uh, you have a question, uh, this council, uh, go ahead, Jane, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering, uh, as to what the executive session was pertaining to.
For purposes of discussing anticipation of, of litigation and preparation for trial.
Alright, and then let's remember in our.
Thank you for asking.
In our request, we'll state the purpose and also length of time.
Correct.
Uh, what is your recommendation for length of time?
Fifteen to thirty minutes.
Okay, we'll say thirty, uh, hopefully we'll be.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to need thirty, there may be thirty minutes of questions.
Okay.
There may be thirty minutes of questions.
Well, we'll say twenty, and, uh, and we'll go from there. Is there a motion for an executive session? Yes. So, sorry?
Without the going back, then you say back there.
Oh, that's correct, yes, sir, that's correct, well, that's understood by everybody. Alright, is there a motion?
It's on move, Mr. President.
Alright, and if this motion, we need to be clear, state the purpose, and we also need to state length of time for the record. So, uh, it has been recommended by attorney, uh, that we have an executive session, uh, to discuss matters that may end up being matters, uh, involving, uh, the law, uh, legal matters, uh, and for a time of twenty minutes. It has been moved by Councilman Johnson at very second. Alright, it's been properly seconded, going to take a session, I'm ready for the discussion, question, roll call, Madam Clark.
President Yon?
Yes.
Councilor Harfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael?
Yes.
Councilwoman James?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the council.
Okay, we'll go back for executive session, we will reconvene, uh, within the next twenty minutes. Thank you. Yeah, we, I said somebody was going to call you, so turn to master somebody, or even if I, we'll hit you. Oh, right, okay.
Couldn't hear that last name. Alright, alright, you got it? That's what I mean, you're already, you're already in. He said he's already sent it to me, I texted him. I need to get into the session. Why ain't nobody answer my question? No, it was from the council. Not the exact.
I told him not, yes, I told him not.
And she's your friend.
Hey, Councilwoman?
And when they said she got that email, I was like, what? I know she wanted to try to back it. She was slapping her forehead like, what?
Hmm.
Ah.
Yeah, say good, good.
Very good.
That's alright. Good operation, come out pretty good. Good operation, come out.
Oh, yeah, 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 she's still doing therapy twice a week, you know, but she's, you know, she's just now, six months after, get to the point where she, about where she was at before.
Okay.
I said we still stretching and trying to get all the lams and all.
And praying, but you knew you got enough prayers, right?
We said, have a pretty major operation, seven hours, long time. And that's my first one, you know, so she's been through several.
God, 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 bless her, good, good man, good mom.
She's happy, she's good, good, you know, like I said, it's starting to get a little more burly.
Okay, okay.
She's signing more, she works on the tablet, you know, and get around them. We all understand her, you know, just.
Whatever, good enough.
Good enough. Girl sits there near church, and she stands up, does her responsible reading, all you hear is vocal singing, but, you know, she did all that.
But that's alright, she's good, and we can't wait to see her when she comes back to the public. We missed her in the council.
There you go, appreciate it.
Indeed.
Would you be the bars, brother?
More than that.
Give me a job at the radio, so I'm facing that.
I give you, I give you a job.
You're back?
Yes, sir.
Alright, let me go get out of here.
Get out back, please.
Get out of here.
There he is, was your watch.
Yes, sir.
Now I'm gonna be eating too late. You know? I remember I eat one o'clock in the morning. You gotta eat it one o'clock in the morning. We have Ms. Harrison back? Can we get our quarterback, can we get everybody back?
And I need to get my secretary and Judge Hager for a very important reason.
Okay, okay. We get everybody back. I don't know if they can hear. We have all the councils back? We wanna wait. She's good, okay, thank you. Madison went to his office. We have the mayor back on, John? Is the mayor back?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we can get Attorney Madison back, we can.
Alright, we're gonna call, uh, we're back in session, is there a motion to go back into the council meeting? Is there a second?
Judge.
Alright, please allow, the record reflect that it was moved by Councilman Johnson and properly seconded by Councilman Jimmison, uh, to go back into session. Any discussion, any further questions? Roll call, now, clerk.
President Young?
Yes.
Council Harville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas? Councilwoman Carmichael?
Yes.
Councilwoman James?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, that concluded, I think, Attorney's Report with the executive session. Uh, is there anything else, Mayor Perkins, that you need to address?
Um, Ms. Reynolds, on the COVID-19 report.
Um, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council President and Council. Uh, very brief report, uh, I just wanted to go back, um, through the month, uh, so since last month, uh, it's been an actual month, and we are at a total of a hundred and fifty-two deaths for Dallas County. But there has been three since, um, actual April the thirteenth. Um, I want to remind the Council, uh, of the vaccine clinic that will be sponsored by, um, Vom Regional, uh, and that will be for the second Moderna, and it is on Wednesday, the twelfth, which is tomorrow, um, eight to one, I mean, and, and the, um, Medical Towers first floor classroom, um, in that building. There has been a total of nineteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-six vaccines, and, uh, as of next week, um, the FDA will be approving the vaccine for twelve to fifteen-year-olds, it should pass. Now, if your child is fourteen years old and has, uh, possibly completed high school, possibly been there, those individuals can, uh, can actually sign for themselves to take the, uh, the COVID vaccine. So, please be prepared, you're, uh, young individuals, uh, and helping to understand, uh, because as of next week, or within the next two weeks, if, uh, the vaccine will be available to them. That is basically all, all I have, thank you all so much.
Thank you, has a word question, uh, from Councilwoman James and Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Okay.
I don't know, I was planning on, uh, doing a credit for our young people at Selma High, um, because we were, we was trying to encourage the kids to get vaccinated before school starts again. So how can I get with you and possible getting this done, um, at Selma High School?
Well, um, Jamie, you can call me at my office, or I can call you, so, uh, it'll be okay, you can give me a time, and I'll call you tomorrow, and let's go ahead and, and set that up, I think. The mayor did meet, uh, with, uh, the superintendent, and this is something that was, uh, interesting to both of them, so, um, yes, let's get together and plan, uh, a vaccine clinic at the school.
Because we want, now, we, I want it to be open for all students, not just Selma High students. Any students, age twelve or fifteen, I want them to be able to come.
That's fine, because we're gonna have to actually, um, at the Vom probably, would totally be interested in helping us with that, or either we'll help, so let's talk about it, uh, I'll give you a call tomorrow, if that's okay.
Councilwoman, uh, Jamie Thomas?
Mr. President, I forgot something that, uh, I should've said in my announcement.
Yes, sir.
But, can I say it?
Go ahead, yes, sir.
I would like to, uh, uh, make this announcement, uh, to the citizens in Ward Seven. I wanna thank, uh, the Roto Club for doing what they're doing, trying to help me, um, make them smiling faces in Ward Seven. Also, I wanna thank the, uh, plan developed, uh, reaching out to, uh, Ms. Root and, uh, her assistant, uh, working with me to making this happen for the, it's very needed in Ward Seven, for the children. So we're working hard on it, and I want the citizens, we're gonna bring something good to our community.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Reynolds, for the COVID report, and thank you, Councilwoman James and Councilwoman Thomas, for the remarks and answers.
Also, we have a public building meeting Monday.
This Monday?
Yes, at one thirty.
At one thirty, change of question.
Yes, and can I make a recommendation, I know that my, my committee, uh, they, they won't be able to attend, can I make a recommendation for, uh, two of the council people to be present? Uh, Sam Randolph and Clay Carmichael will be at the next president, because my two committees won't be able to be there.
I can do my, I can't do two, sixteen.
Okay.
You can do my.
I still need one more, because you said.
And any councilwoman that's wrong?
Yeah, that's why I said, it's.
Great, okay, thank you, okay, Mayor Perkins?
Uh, yes, just a couple of announcements, uh, uh, attention, please, to item two, specifically the COVID-19, you're aware that the government has extended a safer park order. Uh, I've made a different kind of decision, uh, it is, uh, this time, I'm recommending that we not extend the city's ordinance, uh, that is due to sunset on the fourteenth, which is Friday. Uh, I am, uh, I will, uh, replace it with proclamation advising, uh, people on what we should be doing to maintain our personal responsibility for our own safety. Also, uh, that proclamation, once we go back from an ordinance to a proclamation, there will be no efforts to try to enforce, uh, force people to do what is necessary to protect themselves and others from COVID. Uh, we will be strictly under the state's, uh, safer apart order, uh, and whatever the state's order is, that's what we will be under. Uh, also, I will be, uh, continuing strict protocols for the public buildings that are occupied by city employees, uh, city hall, uh, uh, public safety building, et cetera. Uh, and then, uh, as it relates to the convention center, uh, and the performing arts center, uh, with some restrictions on the portions that's occupied by employees, uh, I will be opening up all of our facilities for events. Uh, and those events, those facilities, uh, that are, that are, that are staffed by, by personnel such as the Voms building, building, the old people museums, Stewart Hall, et cetera. Uh, those buildings will be, uh, their occupancy and operations will be, will have to be determined on a case-by-case basis. Uh, uh, I also want to, uh, come back to the council with recommendation, uh, for a, a fee to be added, uh, to those who rent our facilities, and that fee would be to cover the cost of sterilizing the building after it is used by the public. Uh, that's the announcement I wanted to make, uh, is that the council vote to continue the ordinance if you choose, I'm recommending that we not do so.
Thank you, Mayor, and I heard a lot of not, I heard nots up here, uh, when you said, so thank you for that, and we're looking forward to you bringing us, uh, you know, the recommendation regarding the fee for those public buildings, and, uh, thank you for, uh, your report.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Okay, go ahead, the governor.
Yeah, I just wanna remind the council about, uh, Jazz on the Grass is coming back to the downtown city of Selma, and we really, this year, we're gonna recognize, uh, we're gonna do a yellow ribbon campaign to recognize citizens that who we have lost due to COVID in our community, Dallas County. You know, we're gonna have a banner up, where we give them opportunity to write, uh, their, uh, loved one's name, it just means a way for people that we can reach out to that community, we want all the council to, to partnership with this committee, and it's, it's great for our city, it's gonna be an entertainment district, it's a family affair, you know? Just come out and listen to some good music and, uh, and free food, you know, you know, just, it's a day of fellowship, you know, and like I said, uh, maybe, uh, probably one hour next, not the next meeting, but one hour meeting, we could all, uh, some type of yell to recognize all the citizens who we have lost due to COVID. You know, I, I'm, you know, I'm blessed that I survived COVID, I called it two times, you know? And so, so, you know, and I know the first time, I was so sick, I, you know, I don't know what I was doing half the time, I just didn't want my family to come around, but I didn't want to give it to nobody. So let's recognize all our citizens and invite them to participate in this thing, and, uh, we want the mayor, mayor, you there?
Yes.
We want, we want you to participate, uh, you know, uh, with this event, it's a great event for our community. Um, it gonna be in June, and I will be getting back in a few, on a date, we haven't got a date, but it's gonna be on this.
You know, we always have the same time I have, I even, the Jazz on the.
Yeah, what, what date you know I'm having?
It's in June.
Yeah, but we gonna try to do a different date from your date, okay? And like I said, uh, it, it means a lot, much to have participants from all the council, because I guarantee everybody knows somebody that had a loved one who have gone. Because I guarantee everybody knows somebody that had a loved one who has gone on to have, you know. And that's all of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for that. I think that's wonderful. Go ahead, Councilman James, and then, Councilwoman Thomas.
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. Uh, Mayor, uh, do you have a set date on when we can, when people could start renting out, uh, those buildings for social events?
Yes, um, yeah, they can, you can actually start scheduling it down. Uh, and we are planning to start actually remaining buildings available until first.
Look, I am, well, yeah, great, great.
Uh, each councilperson, uh, always has a, a date, uh, free of charge. It's still long, uh, this, this does not, uh, going on, going on, it's not switching.
That's killing this issue.
Well, I just, I know, right, yeah, but still, okay. Well, I, I think, Council, I took the answer there. Yeah, but I just wanted, I want to respect the thought. I got you, I got you. All right, is we, perhaps we can set a, like, uh, is anything, uh, any other announcements while we're doing that that people forgot? All right, committee reports, are there any committees that need to report?
Chairman President Young?
Yes, I think that's Ms. Dawn?
And if I, I just wanted to verify the public buildings, and it means, um, Councilwoman Dana Thomas said on Monday, I have Tuesday, May eighteenth, I wonder, which one is the fourth?
It's Tuesday?
That's what I have on Saturday, but if I'm wrong.
Well, we can go, and they, it's, it's, Sam Randolph.
I think you got Councilwoman Harvick a couple of Mondays, he's done the meeting.
Well, okay, Ms. Harvey, we'll have somebody in for you.
Okay.
We'll get you, we'll give you an update.
So, are we Monday or Tuesday?
She said Tuesday, so.
So we gonna keep it Tuesday? Okay.
At one thirty.
Tuesday, Wednesday, okay.
Yes.
Tuesday, Wednesday. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. No problem.
All right, any other committee that need to report? Any other committee report? Oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
Sorry, mine.
I couldn't, I just thought you were stretching.
Uh, we had, we had a good meeting, uh, the Public Works General Service Committee meeting. What day was that? By seven, sorry. Uh, and, and we had a couple of recommendations. And it involves the executive branch, uh, basically if we could get all the documents, um, completed, and then we want to make them public, make the documents public. And, and then, so that, so that the public can see, uh, what we're working on. And then have public hearings, have two public hearings, uh, prior to approving, officially approving those documents.
Very good, very good. And thank you to the executive branch and also Councilwoman Thomas for working together on that. And we're looking forward to having those public hearings and try to work on this garbage trash problem that we, that's plagued us for long enough. So, thank you all, all, for working on that together. All right, yes, please.
I, I had a couple of questions for Attorney Madison. Sorry, I was, up here. Uh, the Drug Task Force, uh, that, that you had, that we talked about, not about, so, uh, I think you were gonna bring us something like that. How's that?
The Drug Task Force needs seventy-five hundred dollars payment and a contract, uh, recurring contract to get them paid. Uh, that contract will be brought to you, uh, at the next work session.
All right, all right, and then Marina dredging?
Excuse me?
Marina dredging?
The Marina dredging was an issue, I believe the minutes reflected had already been, uh, discussed and I thought voted on. Is that correct, Ida? The Marina dredging?
I'm not sure.
Okay, I, it was in the minutes. I did, uh, did some research. And that was a, a vote, I believe, that had been taken to approve Marina dredging. The question was who was going to do the work. And, uh, we talked about two things. That was a contract that was already agreed upon. And, uh, Tribe County contractors were awarded that contract. The question I heard being asked, that I couldn't ask at the time, and may still not be able to answer, was whether or not extensive dredging of the river mouth, the mouth of the river was in order. And, and that's a-
That's what, I believe that's what the contract was.
Well, the contract was for dredging at the Marina, but that was-
At the mouth of the Marina?
Well, that, but I thought another question was being asked too, about additional dredging. And I didn't have an answer for that at the time, and still don't have one.
Yeah, no, I was, I was, uh, we were talking about the vote that was taken last summer for the fifty thousand dollars that was, uh, for Tribe County to do the dredging at the mouth of the river. And I believe that were, uh, garbage areas was supposed to do some, uh, scope of work, because there never was actually a contract. And, and so, and that was in last year's budget, wasn't carried forward this year.
And, and Mr. Harvick, and Mr. Harvick was contacted by me. The scope of services was due to be drafted, and, and I had asked for that to be done. I'd have to get back in touch with him.
Okay, so that happened?
No, what I'm saying is, I can't draft the scope of services, but I've talked to, uh, the county engineer about that already.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, any other committees need to report? All right, Karen, now, let's go into, uh, unfinished new business. And I know we mentioned it at the work session, and we asked that it plays on the agenda again, just to make sure we get an update with the public. Animals and Ward A, Councilman Johnson? Yes, sir, you want to speak to it?
Really quick, thank, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mayor, um, you know, we talked on this on the work session about the horses, uh, that was, uh, in the field near the residence, which I think the law stated every horse need to be advised to be from the resident. Uh, more than eight percent complained about the smell that had about the horses, you know, near their house and the field. So I called a code enforcement, and the code enforcement told me to call the animal control. Animal control told me I need to call a code enforcement. So I know that, that you said you were looking to it, uh, and I'm just trying to see how we got that solved. Uh, and also that, uh, we got a lot of kids and adults riding around with the horses without bags on them. Just going everywhere in the whole yard, and getting a lot of complaints about that. That they hope they wear a diaper, uh, look, there's a bag behind their tail, they hope they're putting on, on these horses. Uh, because the folks complained about they coming in the yard, riding horses, and needing to drop them for them to pick up. Uh, so I would like for the officers to, to, they, now, I understand if some major come up, another major crime, they're gonna let this small thing go. But meanwhile, they ain't doing it, and they see it, try to at least give these guys a warning or something. But the bigger thing is, uh, the lady called me every week about horses in her yard and the smell that came suddenly from her. Have you looked into this or talked to the code enforcement about this situation, Mayor?
I, I've spoken, I've spoken with code enforcement and, uh, the chief police. And I think the conclusion is that this really is an animal control issue, to put it back under the police department. Uh, and so, uh, it's, it's complicated. I think Councilman Harvey has another situation where he's got, uh, a cow pasture, where a portion of it is in the city limits and, uh, another portion is in the county. Uh, the ordinance is clear about that. And I, I have to go back now and look, look to see, I, 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 because I don't recall whether the ordinance changed. But the ordinance, if I recall it correctly, it gave citizens the option to have one, one horse, one pig, one chicken, something like that. But you couldn't have a lot of them, and they had to be a certain distance away from your neighbor's property. Is that, is that the code you're speaking of, Council?
It sounds familiar, but, but again, the, 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 at least a thousand feet away, or at least horses would be a thousand feet away from that.
They have to have a certain distance away from their neighbor's property, yeah. And that, yeah, we, you know, we've observed that, that code has not been maintained for years since, well, I know we, we maintained it. But it hasn't maintained for years. So, but I did talk to chief, and I did talk to, to answer your question. I did talk to, uh, Steve Hendrick and Chief Ofer, and I think the consensus is coming down to it's gonna actually be an animal control issue, laws.
So, so my, 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 I know they're gonna call me tomorrow. And this animal just, just down in the lower shallow, and, and a cub, and it's still, and this lady, they just calling out to me, they crying out for help. So who I need to call, once I get this phone call from them, call the animal control, Mayor, or the code enforcement, see them?
There would be, there would be animal control, uh, and if you have trouble with them, call the chief, because they are under the police department's jurisdiction.
Okay, okay, good.
Citizens should be able to call the non-emergency number, uh, in nine-one-one, you know, that's seventy-four, six-six-one-one number, uh, to get assistance with that, with police, that's the way it should.
Well, they're on the line, they're listening, so I just want to make sure that they hear this as well. So, uh, this is something I've been dealing with for, going on nine years, down with the horses and the way. Mayor, thank you so much, man, I appreciate that.
Okay, and, and Councilwoman, if you talk to them about it, um, we want to work with you to make sure you get to the right house.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate you. Thank you, Councilwoman Jane Thomas.
I would like, Attorney Madison, my old business, my old business, the request that I had asked you, I would like to, uh, uh, you to, to let this, uh, so, um.
All right, may I address, please, Councilwoman Thomas, yes, sir.
Yes, and you've been very patient, thank you.
I've been very patient.
Councilwoman Thomas requested I do some research on some Attorney General's Office opinions.
Yes, sir.
What took so long was I was pulling up, I was putting in Attorney General opinion numbers or identifying information. And I was getting back dozens of responses. So I finally called the Attorney General's Office and got an Assistant Attorney General on the phone, then back to me, who helped me immensely. He also, uh, wrote me back an email saying, gee, you went way back, and so, we had, he had to do, get him, he had to get up. He said he also had issues with that software. So I said, so it wasn't just me? And he said, no, it wasn't just you. But I want to apologize, but the delay was not all my fault, is what I'm getting at. Uh, the other thing is that I sent the Attorney General's opinions that were requested to the council. I sent them with a note, I believe, saying I thought you should have time to review them, because I didn't know that you would have adequate time tonight with the executive session, with the Attorney General's opinions. With the additional information I sent you also about Attorney General's opinion request I wrote with contracting information. I didn't think you would have enough time to consume that. I'm gonna leave that up to Councilwoman Thomas, because I thought you should read it, and then we should get back and have plenty of time to discuss this next Thursday, but it's her call.
And that's my recommendation, uh, because I have held this up too long, but I do, I have got, uh, the, the answers that, uh, through the Attorney General, based on this by the legislature that we should know, if it deals with anyone else that, uh, that sits up here, that probably own any, any type of business that, uh, we should notice, and, uh, have it doing a good reason, and, uh, I, I want our attorney to-
Research.
Just make sure that, so we, so each one of us, so when we come back, the next council meeting, uh, the, the next work session, any questions that we ask, so that we can have a good, clear understanding.
It, it will also give me, thank you, Councilwoman Thomas, it will also give me further chance. I got these this morning.
Okay.
I got the, some of the information that we shared earlier this morning. So, I'm not exact, I'm not totally in control of the information flow to me. So I just wanted more time for all of us to digest it, and then I'll be willing to answer any questions you have, especially at the next work session.
I agree, Councilwoman Thomas, something that you said.
So all of us, if no, nobody would have to, you don't have to ground no more, you know.
Okay, thank you. I, I've seen that email with all those AGs.
And, and before, and before we end tonight, Mr. President, I, I'd like to point out, Chris, something that the mayor's requesting.
Okay.
The, is it time?
You can go ahead, wait, wait, the, the, uh, the question is, sir.
There are some, some of you are probably wondering why, just, you've been sitting there basically all night. Uh, there are some cases in municipal court that have occasioned recusals by several individuals in the municipal court, judges, and, uh, and probable prosecutors too. But the mayor is responsible for getting a, a name, a special, especially appointed judge to hear such cases as that, that is a provision for in the statute. And the mayor has asked that five names be presented to him, one of which is to be drawn publicly, to get someone who has been vetted by both the municipal judge and me to hear said cases. Uh, I don't want to go into more detail than that, but there are aged cases, and they're important to be, they're aged cases. I want to emphasize that, because aged, H-E-D, and they are cases that have to be resolved, and the sooner the better.
Okay.
So he just wants us to pull names tonight. I'm asking my secretary to do a pulling. She's got five names in here. And, and, and he asked, he asked that he be allowed to speak before we do this.
Yeah, I, I, I want to, uh, just make the council aware that I've been down this road before. And when I did this the last time, I did it in the presence of former city attorney Jimmy Nunn. He brought the names to my office. I drew one out of a hat, gave it to him and say, here's the judge. Uh, and then after that, I got accused of handpicking a judge to work against, uh, 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 people in that case. And so this time, I decided to do it publicly, uh, and let somebody else draw the names. Uh, the, the judge and the attorney, presiding judge and the attorney vetted these individuals. It's my responsibility to appoint a presiding judge on these cases. And so we're gonna do that right now in the presence of everybody else. Y'all go ahead and draw a name. And, uh, that will be the presiding judge that we will call. That'll be the one special process, special presiding judge that we will call, uh, to handle these cases.
And these are all jurors, these are all jurors, municipal judges, who will bring their own-
So these are all judges, all municipal judges?
Former judges.
All of them?
Municipal, all of them judges. Councilwoman Thomas is drawing, here we go.
Chris? You better be, uh?
And the winning judge, Judge R.A. Bucky Thomas.
Nate, Nate.
Did that Councilwoman Christie Thomas?
For the record, Ms. Ivey, he's known for relationships to me.
And they are on the robbery, no choice.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
Uh, I'd like to make the motion to have Attorney Madison move forward with the issue discussed in the executive session.
All right, thank you. Uh, it's a good, probably second. Um, Attorney, uh, move forward with those issues discussed in the executive session. Is there a discussion, any questions? Here's a roll call, roundtable.
President Young?
Yes.
Councilman Harvey? Councilwoman Christie Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carmichael?
Yes.
Councilwoman James?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilman Jameson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Janie Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Excellent, excellent. And thank you for reminding us of that, Councilwoman Carmichael. Some of us are forgetting. Uh, any other, you, uh, finished, it's Councilman James.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. To Mayor, uh, you've been calling me, and, uh, you picked the trash up last time on the side of the road, uh, those holes being filled up and putting signs out for no dumping. Uh, what's the process and, uh, what we at right now for filling those holes up? Is there some, uh, some really deep holes out there?
Uh, we're working on it, uh, just to get, to get all the equipment we needed, uh, scanning for, uh, materials. Uh, that's, that's what we're waiting on, the equipment that we just got to change the oil, it had gasoline yet. Uh, so as soon as it gets in, we'll, we'll get to filling up those up.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, Councilwoman Thomas?
See if, if the, if, um, the mayor had an update on the apartment complexes that he spoke about in the work section, work session. Reading square, no, no, Councilwoman, I do not have an update on that as yet, but we are, we've done the end work. I do know that, uh, that we are pushing, well, I do have, if that was, uh, but I can't remember which one of the apartments it was, but they did agree to fully cooperate, uh, to get the, the, the driveway fixed and do a couple of things there. And, um, but I, I'll have to, I will have to get someone to call-
And, but I'll have to, I will have to get someone to call you and give you the specifics on it, Councilman, because I don't remember all of the details. I can't remember which apartment complex it was.
I hope so. Thank you.
I don't think we got the same message from them, but I will get that information.
Okay, thanks.
Any other new unfinished business? This is for you, all right, go ahead, Councilman.
And I want to reiterate something you said and a request that I made of the council previously. Any directive or request or research that's being asked of me, if it can be filtered through the administrative assistant to the council and put to me in an email, I then have everything you asked me to do. I can refer to it over and over again, and I can adequately respond in time to respond without having to guess. I'll make sure my secretary, I didn't miss the notes.
Thank you. Council, we've heard that from the attorney, and let's remember and act accordingly.
Thank you.
All right, at my work session, I mentioned about SRA, and I was going to bring a recommendation to this council for a budget amendment for the SRA because they have some projects that they want scheduled. What I'm going to do, we're going to give ourselves a little bit more time, I'm going to have the SRA submit to us some information about their upcoming plans and share that with y'all. So that way you'll see some of the work that this entity is actually doing. And hopefully after seeing that information, it will push you along to go along with some form of a budget amendment. So look forward to getting that sometime this week. We'll get some information from SRA about some things that they do have planned and some things that already have accomplished. We know that SRA was very helpful in making sure they said James opened that up, as we use them as a conduit for the city. So they are an arm of the city, and sometimes should exercise that arm. So let's remember that and look for that upcoming. I know that the mayor on several times has made this announcement about the walk, the job fair. Mayor Perkins, you want to add anything? I know you, you've been pumping that up for us.
Yeah, it's no longer the job fair, it's the job walk.
Okay.
And they're taking social distance, and so I, there are going to be several businesses there announcing to the citizens, just that says the code didn't get them off. The government is cutting off all that extra money.
Yeah, we saw that yesterday.
I want to cut them, the government's cutting off that extra money. And I will tell you that as soon as the announcement was out, we had an unusual flow of people coming in.
Oh, wow.
I think this is the time for the job fair.
It is.
And then, uh, then, Councilman President Young, we talked about the vaccine announcement, joint announcement. I do have some yard signs, and I think we need to get together and do that announcement. So if you can give me a tape?
Yes, sir. I spoke with Ms. Taylor on yesterday.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get that done because I, you know, we do need to push the vaccine.
Yes, sir.
And again, I said push the vaccine, the first responsibility, because at this point, city itself is no longer going to try to make COVID worse than this, then I will.
Thank you, Mayor.
May 19th, that's our...
May 19th.
May 19th.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Jane Thomas?
And this is, Attorney, Attorney Madison, can you make sure that our, our council secretary, the information that you, your secretary sent us, so that our secretary can have it be sent to her email too?
Sure. Excellent. I have started CCing her on every day once in the house.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Thomas. And one more thing, we've been able to have our council member, council meetings air on social media by way of our good friend Reverend Colin Leck. So let's thank Reverend Colin Leck. You know, a lot of the public have gotten accustomed to Zoom meetings, and I think when we came back to chambers, they were concerned that they would not have this opportunity to view our meetings. And so, good thanks to our good friend Reverend Colin Leck for assisting in making sure that we got the word out, because we do believe in a transparent municipal government. So thank you again, Reverend Colin Leck. Here, no further business. This meeting now stands adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.